We have no law. They shouldn't, they shouldn't be seen, they shouldn't take us in. If it isn't necessary, of course, I think it's inappropriate. All right? Now I got one minute.
Three sites in.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Council President Robert J. Silvia.
Yeah.
Vice President Paul M. Rodriguez. Counselor Terry Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Henry F. LaBardi Jr.
Here.
Counselor M. Teresa Santos.
Here.
Counselor Devin B. Torano. Counselor Barbara A. Von Villas. We have four, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please join us in the pleasure to lead us to our flag.
Our pleasure to lead us to the flag of the United States of America. Intuitively, all of our forces stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, deliberate, and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. The Vice President's going to be a few minutes late, but he'll be here. He's on his way here now. Oh, he just came in the door right now. Madam Clerk, please note that the Vice President's here.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Item number one. Public hearing advertised. Public hearing was open on Wednesday, May 22, 2019. In ordinance to the town of Middletown, this is the first reading. An ordinance and amendment to the ordinances of the town of Middletown. General Fund, Parks and Recreation Fund, Sewer Fund, Refuge and Recycling Fund, appropriating revenues for the fiscal year July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020. Council action is to receive on its first reading.
Motion to receive said ordinance on its first reading.
Second.
Given motion to second to receive. Any conversation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number two. Public hearing advertised. Public hearing remains open. In ordinance to the town of Middletown, this is the second reading. An ordinance and amendment to the ordinances of the town of Middletown. General Fund, Parks and Recreation Fund, Sewer Fund, Refuge and Recycling Fund, appropriating revenues for fiscal year 20, July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020.
The public hearing remains open.
Okay, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to be heard in regards to the matter at hand? Go ahead. Name and address, please. Madam Clerk, start the clock.
Kelly Simeoni, 18 Pocahontas Drive. I sent over some slides that I wanted to see if this town administrator could put up. Thank you. So I want to thank you for your time tonight. I do intend to be brief with my comments. I just feel that there are a few items that I would like to address. At the last few meetings, there's been a significant focus on the performance payouts provided to non-bargaining unit personnel within the school department. The school committee consciously decided to move to a performance-based compensation model for these groups because it made good business sense. And in the absence of significant budget increases, it allowed us to allocate more of our funding directly to support our classrooms. I want to show with a few examples, so if you could go to the next slide, please. So this is essentially what I just said. Why did we move to that? And the bottom line is because it saves the district money. And you may be surprised here that, but I'd like to walk you through and explain that. So the rationale is these performance payments more directly tie an employee's compensation to their individual performance. They don't automatically increase the base salary. Salary increases do do that, and they're compounded. So the former, the model that we went with, does save our taxpayers' money. Next slide, please. I'll give you an example using a central office administrator as an example. So we have four folks in this group. And I asked the staff to calculate out if we had provided increases yearly similar to what's included in the contract for our certified teachers, as well as the longevity and the degree payments, without the bonuses calculated in there. The total wages for one of those administrators would have been $995,626 over the six-year period. What we actually paid to that employee over that six-year period with the base salary, the two raises that did take place, plus the performance payments, was $968,025. So for this one individual, it was a savings of $27,601 over the course of those six years. And again, this should be expanded out across the four individuals. Not all of them are exactly the same, but comparable. Next slide, please. So the next group are our school-based administrators, and we did a similar calculation. So not to belabor it, but over the six-year period, what we would have paid if the longevity and degree payments were in there, similar to the certified staff, as well as the annual compounded increases at the same rate, it would have been $655,712 for one individual. In reality, what we did pay to that individual over six years was $620,212. So the overall savings for that individual was $35,500, and that's one of our average school-based administrators. They do receive different salaries based on whether they're at the high school, elementary, and assistant principal, et cetera. Next slide, please. So this is for, an example for our school support staff and clerical staff. It's a smaller number. The difference here, I won't go through all the details, but the difference ultimately is $1,325 per individual. And there are 19 individuals in this group. So if you take this data and you add it up for all those individuals, we saved the district, the town, really, over $300,000 over those six years by implementing the model that we did go with. We feel that this, as I said, was a good business decision. It ties these individuals' compensation to their performance. So as a result, we can agree or disagree on the model that we chose. Again, we feel it was the right model, but ultimately, this is not a legitimate reason to withhold funding for the coming year. Next slide. So this is my last slide. I wanted to take, just to break down a lot of what we've discussed over the last few meetings about why, what's the need for this increased appropriation. So the slide on the, the bar on the bottom shows all of the, the heavy hitters, I'll say, the top six reasons and revenue and expense changes that we're facing this year. So reduction in the funding formula is about $400,000. Group home aid reduction is just under $200,000. Contractual increases that we agreed to with our bargaining units and that you ratified is just over $500,000. Mandated staffing increases are around, are going to be around $200,000 as an estimate. The special education increase is just over $300,000 total, including out of district tuitions and similar, the contractual increase for our special education employees. And finally, the transportation increase that we've discussed at the last meeting, around $400,000. So overall, in the operating budget from one year to the next, we're looking at, what we're asking for would allow us to increase the budget by about 2.92 percent. But as you can see, we're already going to be forced to make approximately $1 million worth of reductions before, even if we were fully funded. So just ask you to keep this in mind. Ultimately, it's about the kids, right? We can argue, we can disagree, but it's not going to affect me personally, right? I'm going to go home tonight. You know, I was lucky enough to have received my education and have a great job, and I'm happy. Our students, I want to be as lucky. I want them to have that great education, and if we don't have the funding to support it, I worry about what will happen to our performance in the coming years.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, if anybody noticed, I know I have one gentleman in the audience that always notices when I let somebody go over past the time limit on the clock. I did that out of courtesy to Madam Chair from the school.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay. Does anyone else in the audience would like to say anything? Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to open it up to the councilors, and I'm going to ask the councilors if they have any comments that they want to make as we close out the budget tonight and make some other motions. So I'll open it up to anybody who has any comments. Counselor Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's been quite a flurry of emails and documents just in the last few days, so I just want to kind of wrap up some of the last-minute thoughts that I had. And one of them was on the civic appropriations. I've been talking or emailing with Mr. Brown, and I just would like to clarify a couple of things, if that's possible. If you recall in his email, he suggested that we flat fund the civic appropriations, which means have the same amount this year as last year. And there's a line item in the rec fund that is not being funded anything because they didn't get their application, and it's for $3,800. So the bottom line is actually $3,800 less than last year's. And we have two line items that requested money and are not getting funded. So I did talk with Mr. Brown about that a little bit, and I wasn't quite sure that I had all the information of the big picture, so I'd just like to ask the council what their thoughts are on that, on that subject. So one of the things that didn't get funded, now the $3,800s coming out of the Park and Rec Fund, the Beach Fund, and for Sale Newport, and there's one line item in there for, oops, excuse me, I have to grab my document here, for $1,000 requested that didn't get funded. It's for the Star Kids Program. And, you know, it would, it comes from the same fund, so it's not messy, at least. It's just, you know, you take the $3,800 and you take $1,000 of it and you put it there. And this is a group that, you know, I don't know if you know the Star Kids Program, and I don't know, Mr. Brown, this is my one question, do we fund them in any other way?
No.
We do not. So I was wondering if the council would be open to funding that line item because it is for Middletown kids. 20% of their population, according to their application, is Middletown students. And to be a Star Kid, one or both of your parents are incarcerated. So I would like to know how you feel about supporting that group of Middletowners, helping to support that group of Middletowner. Their administration expenses are very low. They're like the $30,000, the salary that those folks are getting from what I read on their application. So that's the first of, under that umbrella. Thoughts?
My initial thought is, Mr. Brown, is that a private institution?
It is a 501(c)(3), I believe. Yeah, it's separate apart from...
And Counselor Flynn, you're asking for $1,000 to help them?
That was their request, yes.
My suggestion would be, okay, that we would bring that up on a docket item at the next council meeting. The President will have a new discretionary fund that we can utilize for tokens like that, and I think it'd be more appropriate at that time.
However you want to direct that.
That's just my feelings right now.
Okay, go ahead.
Counselor LaBardi.
To clarify one thing, Sale Newport is Middletown High School Sailing Team? That's what that money is for? So you'll clarify that.
Well, they, they are not being funded because they didn't apply for it this year, and they had it last year.
No, you said Sale Newport. You mentioned they were being funded.
No. I'm sorry if I was unclear. The, the, this, last year, they were funded $3,800. This year, they did not get their application in. So that is, so the bottom line is $3,800 less than last year's. So the recommended flat funding from Mr. Brown means that we are $3,800 less than last year, so we are having civic appropriations of $3,800 less than last year.
So if you're okay with that, I would suggest...
I missed that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would suggest a, just a docket item, maybe for the next town council meeting, and then we'll discuss it then.
That's fine, however you want to direct it. So that was the first one. The other line item is, it's actually out of the general fund appropriations. It's not being funded this year. It's $1,500 requested by Meals on Wheels, and specifically for Middletown elderly. And I'm not sure if Ms. Call can answer to that all, if you knew anything about that program and their request, or how many seniors participate.
I do know about that program. It is basically all Middletown seniors. It's a program that is very difficult to get onto because it has so many participants in it. And if I call and ask, it's like a two-year wait to get into that program. So that's the information I have for you.
Okay, so it's a total of $1,500 request?
Yes.
Okay, so that apparently could have been an oversight. Why don't we, why don't we put that down as a docket item for the next docket as well?
Also?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
It'd be a lot cleaner and easier.
Okay. So also, same under civic appropriations. This is my one of three questions.
Okay.
I hope you have my... So, so again, because we have that, you know, $3,800 delta from flat funding that would be quote-unquote "available," what comes to mind is the, I recall, of all the departments that came before us, the ones who seem to be really doing a lot with very little staffing or extra support is the Senior Center. And for, you know, recreation funds additional, maybe to go in that direction, I would like to know what the council thought, thinks of that proposal, so that they can do a little bit more for the seniors. And because they are stretched so thin, I think that it would help do more and, you know, offer some, some resources to the, really, the two leads that are running that whole program.
Okay. My only feedback would be to get with Director Paul. If there's a certain program or something that you need, I think this council has been very receptive in the past to anything that our seniors needed. And again, I would bring that up as a docket item.
Docket items.
As a docket item later on.
Okay.
Come right up to the mic, please.
Terry, thank you. I had no idea you were going to do that, but I think Terry has been to the Senior Center with the Affordable Housing Committee a number of times, and she has seen what we actually do, and therefore, I thank you for that. I, I, you have been generous in the past, and you continue to be. I will look at the programs again. We try to operate on a very fine line always, and I try not to put into extra. I try to see if we can't raise that money ourselves to do it. But like she said, we do have a staff of two, and maybe I need to stretch that a little bit.
Yeah, thank you. And I think you, you think you did recognize that, but we've always been very open-minded and receptive to anything that was truly needed by our seniors. Okay, but thank you, Counselor Flynn.
I didn't know which venue I should bring it up at.
Because of the values, and because of this, it's easier, cleaner to do it in a docket.
End it. That's fine with me. Okay.
Counselor LaBardi, did you want to say something?
Mr. Brown, this, this document we have here with the docket tonight, if you go to page six, line 46...
I don't think I have. I'm sorry, what page are you on?
I'm on page six.
Yep.
Here's over the back. Line 46?
Yes.
It's, what's, what's going on?
That should be removed. That's a...
What was the question you got? Line 46, it says Sale Newport, $3,800.
$3,800.
Yeah, so I think this is an oversight by the Finance Office, but Sale Newport didn't apply for the funds this year.
Did they not apply, or did they get it in late?
No, they didn't apply. They may actually physically came in the office and pulled an application and never returned it, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, if you know you want to. Okay. Any, any other councilors like to talk about any items, any guys to the current budget?
I'm not done, but I'll let somebody else.
No, no, go right ahead.
Well, I think Counselor...
No, go right ahead.
So I want to talk about the CIP as kind of generally. And so, you know, last time, we highlighted the fact that by ordinance, that total increases is mandated to increase every year. And I'm, I'm just not sure that when it comes time to fund these, you know, we got the email that, you know, your response, thank you for that. So I just want to make sure that I understand that. So what's in the CIP list? When, when and if it comes for funding, we are not obligated to, at that given time, say we have to fund it. If there are other priorities that have come up, or if we, other needs, things have changed, we can, we are not bound to fund the things on the CIP. Do I have that right?
Yes.
You do.
I do have that right.
Yeah, you do. Like I put in that note that I sent out, just to clarify.
That's why I just want to clarify.
Is that I sent that out to say, we discuss every line item where funding gets allocated. The budget process is not the end-all, okay? The budget process is us saying to our constituents, this is how much money is going to be in the budget. And then later on, as things come up, and things do change periodically, and many times, many times, we've had CIP line items that never got funded, that were there that never got funded, or we reallocated the funding. But we will do that as a council, as a governing body, on every line item that comes up for expenditures. And then we'll do a resolution to award the funding.
Throughout the year?
As line item throughout the year, yes.
So no one's going to say, it was in the budget, you have to fund it?
No one can say that.
Thank you.
Anything else else?
Make sure. No, thank you very much.
Well, that's good. I mean, I know this is your first budget.
First time.
And I appreciate that, but, you know, don't hesitate if you have any other...
Thank you very much.
Does anybody else have any questions? Counselor Santos.
I have to talk into the mic. I hope everybody can hear me, because I was told that people out there cannot hear me when I speak. I'd like to speak on the civic support also regarding the Middletown Historical Society. This year, we were hit hard. The town owns Paradise School, Wetherby School, and I'm going to say the windmill, but that's a question. But Mr. Brown will probably correct me. Now, Wetherby, we were hit with water in the basement. The furnace, we had water in the cellar. That cost us over $3,000 to pay to have everything done. Wetherby, the corner roof, the corner shingles on the roof were torn off, and we had rain and damage to the inside of the school. Now, we also have to prepare Wetherby School for our students from the fourth and fifth grade who are going to be visiting the school to see what ate. School was back in the days, and they have the slate, they have the boards and also. And unfortunately, we did not get a grant, so we're going to have to pay for that. This year, we stayed with, we stayed solid, $6,500. Our money comes from memberships, from donations, from people who pass away and leave us money. We were hard, hit hard this year, but we kept the line at $6,500. We didn't ask for any more. I'm done. Did you hear me?
I heard you.
Thank you.
We heard you loud and clear.
Thank you.
You spoke very clearly and loudly into that mic.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I had a lady call me, I told Counselor Santos, a lady called me at 10:30 the other night. I go to bed early. Get up early. Called me, she says, I can't hear you. I thought she was talking about the phone. She said, I can't hear, and I can't hear you and Teresa Santos and a few other people. I said, can't hear us what? And she says, I'm watching you on TV. I said, oh, okay. So I spoke to Nate and the IT people tonight, and those of us that she couldn't hear, we're going to make an attempt to keep our mics in front of us and...
I hope everybody heard me tonight. Did you? Thank you.
I'll call your house next time when the lady calls me, if she calls me again, okay? But, all right. Any other councilor like to bring up anything we got to the budget? Vice President.
Thank you. Shaun, so the...
Yes, loud and clear.
Shaun, the, the request is for two pumper trucks.
No, one pumper truck.
One pumper?
Yes.
Okay. Thought it was two.
We had originally, last year, discussed having two pumpers. And we were looking at that from the standpoint of having a uniform setup for both lead pumpers. But the proposal that's in this budget is for one pumper truck, which would replace the fourth pumper truck that we basically got rid of about seven years ago when we were renovating the station. So this would bring us back up to the strength that this town is...
I thought during the budget discussion, Shaun, there was two pumper trucks requests, and I thought that one of them was going to be a backup, and I had issue with that.
No, there's, there's only one pumper.
Okay, good. So the police, the request for the police bus or van, whatever you want to call it, how much is that for? Because it's lumped in with, I was looking through the CIP earlier, and it's lumped together from what I saw with the cruisers, replacement of cruisers.
Yep. Just give me one second.
I think it's between 60 and 70. I'm not sure, but I just want to, I want a, want a number.
So the number that's in the CIP right now, or in the budget, $59,562.
Okay.
Chief Q is here. I don't know if he has a more accurate number. Okay, thank you.
And that's, that's totally outfitted with everything. There's no other, nothing else coming forward where it needs this, lights and additional equipment?
The chief can address the configuration of the van, but it is a, it's going to be a standard, basic administrative vehicle that would be able to be used by the Police Department or any other department in the town. Say the planning department has a site visit. I believe it's going to be outfitted with a radio, as well as, not an active light system, but one of the passive light systems that can be utilized that's hidden more or less like in an unmarked car.
The van was originally quoted...
Chief, could you go to the mic, please?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
The van with the equipment was originally quoted at $59,000. However, it'll come in under budget on that one, because in being a town vehicle, we want all the town departments to be able to utilize that, whether it be the fire department, whether it be Senior Center, whether it be a school department. So this will be a town van. It will not be outfitted with any type of graphics on it. However, it will have emergency lights in there and a town radio for any type of emergencies, such as we have the National Grid. It'd also be used for the trainings of our officers. As you know, we don't have a van, excuse me, a range, and we have to travel out of town sometimes to New Bedford for all 38 sworn officers that at times are taking four or five cruisers out of town, putting wear and tear on those cars for additional usage. Also, some of the other justifications, when I looked at this, obviously, this was prior to my arrival on the, on the proposal on this, but I wholeheartedly endorse this on a multitude of reasons, being the special events that we have with parades, honor guard requests, funerals throughout the year that these guys do attend. And the firearms, as you know, is two times per year. That's just for that, not lethal, less than lethal force training. And again, these guys are traveling, you know, eight to 12 guys at a time, rather than taking four or five cruisers and traveling them out of town, particularly when our cruisers are getting old, the older cruisers that we're using for details right now, we have to ensure during the busy months that we're utilizing our cruisers for the details and making sure that we have enough to fill the construction projects as well. Other trainings, excuse me, the God Day School, as you guys know, it's, it's one of our resources for our shelter here, for Quidnic Island. No better event that happened with National Grid, where we could have used transporting additional town staff, personnel, working with National Grid, going house to house, transporting people, other evacuation events that would warrant that. transporting people, other evacuation events that would warrant that, whether it be evacuation of schools, uh, women shelters, seniors, National Grid event, as I brought up, loss of power for days, other weather-related events, hurricanes, floods, big storms, transporting equipment, transporting people. Um, we don't have a, a passenger van in town that can do that right now. In addition to that, and looking at that van, we would also use it to tow our variable message board signs that we're constantly putting out daily in different locations, particularly in a time where construction is bigger, and, uh, we have the beaches going on night, right now, and we're constantly moving them on a daily basis, weekly basis on those boards. Also, it could be used to, uh, tow our boat, uh, for the Harbor Masser, which is, which is a need as well. We wouldn't have to get the, uh, the duly trucks from, uh, Public Works Department to tow our, um, our boat. Um, and again, it would be, also be used and accessible to any other department within the town and the needs for the town. Um, so that's basically the justification that I saw. I thought the needs of this van would, uh, definitely outweigh the cons, um, and it's something that the, uh, you know, again, less wear and tear on our cruisers, and would be, uh, be able to be used for years to come for the town in transporting people. Any other questions on that?
No, sir. I have, Chief, I have one. Uh, maybe both to you and Mr. Brown. Would any town employee with a valid driver's license be able to drive it? I mean, if they're going to use that van, it doesn't have to be driven by a policeman, correct?
Correct, absolutely not. Anyone with a valid Rhode Island driver's license would be able to drive that for town purposes.
Okay.
And it would be exclusively for town employees.
Okay.
That are covered under the insurance.
And like you said, no graphics on it?
No graphics, and that's going to save us money. And, um, it would have reduced lights, it would have lights, it wouldn't be emergency response vehicles per se, but just for escorts to get people to scenes and everything like that, whether it be fire personnel, whether it be police personnel, or what have you.
More along the line like Mr. Brown alluded to, um, like the unmarked car lights.
It would be unmarked, yes. Yeah, it wouldn't have the, uh, highly expensive light, no.
Mr. President?
Council Clint?
Just, just a clarification, Chief. So the $59,000, which is in the budget, that would include the van, the radio, the lights, everything?
That's correct. And it will probably, it will definitely come in under budget on that.
Thank you.
Why do you, Chief, why do you think it's going to come under budget?
Well, just because we had decked, we had due, the graphics are going to, we're not paying for the graphics, which were in the original quote, so the graphics were also included. So in the original quote was, um, the graphics, which was $1,000, and then some of the additional equipment we're not going to need due to the outfitting of the lights, because we're going to reduce the lights and that, and that was, that came at 47,000, uh, excuse me, $4,793.30. We won't need as many lights, because we're not going to outfit it as a response vehicle per se, and the radios are, are going to be about the $3,300, which was quoted.
So what do you think it's going to come in at?
So I think it was going to come in at approximately, probably for the lights, hmm, it's going to come in at probably 50, it'll be $2,500, probably cheaper than $59,005.61 quote.
Can we budget for that?
We can get another updated, I can get another updated quote for you tomorrow, sir.
I see.
One other question, Chief, um, maybe it seems a little bit picky, but since other town employees will be using it, do we really need a police radio in it if the police officers that are going to utilize it are going to have their portable radios?
Um, that's something we can look at, but I think, um, you know, the, the portables work well in town, but they have their capabilities as well. And, and it's something that I, I think the radio that we can look at, do we have to put a brand new one in there? No, we can look at recycling one of the, all the radios.
Are you talking, what, $3,300?
It's $3,300 for a brand, for a brand new radio. That's a, just a basic model one, and they didn't go high end on that, so, um, based on the use. But that's something we can look at too, to maybe get a little bit cheaper than that.
Well, I'll tell you that, you know, um, obviously, when you look at budgets, and we, you know, we look at, you're looking at your department, because that's what you do. Fire looks at their department, because that's what they do. Each department does that, because that's what they do. We look at it holistically on where we can save a dollar here and there, and I look at things, and I know you're new to, in town, and new, maybe to where some of us operate and the way we think. So my mindset's always been what's nice to have versus what's really necessary to have. Um, this kind of seems like a nice to me. Um, I get why you want it. If I was you, I'd be making the same pitch. Um, I'm not going to support that, but I'm not also going to vote against the whole budget because of it. We'll get another crack, I'll get another crack at it when it comes before us, um, so, but I don't want to hear, well, you approved it at budget time. Because that's, that's the kind of circle that goes off here sometimes, uh, Mrs. Vaughn. Paul, you approved that at budget time. Why are you against it now? I just want it on the record, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in favor of it, but I'm not going to not support the whole budget, the general fund, because of it. But I'll, I'll have this discussion again when, when it come before us for, uh, approval for it. May not win, that's okay. I'll still be able to state my case.
Very good, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And ladies and gentlemen, again, I just want to reiterate what I said to, uh, Council Flynn about the budget process. It's, it's the allocation of a general fund of money, allocation of money. And then later on, as we go through the year, we allocate the money from the requests that have been made. So if we have a CIP that says, you know, that we were going to do, uh, let's say for these, I, I'm going to use for an example, to pave, uh, Second Beach parking lot, there's an allocation of money in, in, in the town administrator's proposal for that. When it comes to us to vote on it at that time, we can either confirm it, allocate the funding, change it, not fund it. There's a multitude of things that we can do as a governing body, so I just want to get that point across. Mr. Viveras, start the clock, man.
Thank you, Mr. President, member of council. I sort of waited, because I have some, some questions, uh, in the purchase of a pumper. How are we going to pay for it?
Uh, the pumper truck would be funded from the rescue wagon fund, uh, in the actual, uh, that, that purchase would be financed with a, a lease purchase agreement over a five-year period.
So we will be, uh, I guess, Lee, to send what, what, we're going, we're going to have another monthly payment or yearly payment?
We would be making payments on it, yes.
Right. We're supposed to take the money, supposed to have, the, the rescue wagon was supposed to pay for rescue wagon. With the PPV fund, we're supposed to pay for other things, for safety, uh, a coordinate. Most of that money's being used up for the, to pay the bond on the police station and fire station. So we're going out, at least, at least, at least of the, the purchase. Uh, the van came up before, and it was not accepted, okay? Uh, I don't know why, if you need a van, why we can't rent one. Take the old Kojak machine, the bubble machine, put it on the top if you need lights, okay? $59,000 or so, we can, we, we can rent it, and as far as putting it in the budget, and then when it comes up before us, say no, I've been there, and we never say no. Because when we try to, to pull something back, well, it's in the budget, and that's what we, what we constantly hear. So if Mr. Brown has been before us, you're going to approve, approve the budget, he amended the budget and took it out. At the next meeting, let him present an adjusted budget with the van out, and anything else of any question out of the budget, and then you can approve it at the next, next council meeting. And while I'm here, I might as well say, you know, I was a little upset when I read about the school apartment bonuses. Uh, brought me back, deja vu, and where the late Manny Santos, Manny, I'm sorry, Manny Mello, at budget hearings, used to say that the school apartment was hiding money, he didn't know where it was, but they had, uh, money and didn't need such large increases. Through the years, they proved him right. So I'm going back a few years, starting with the expenditures of a million dollars for the computers, with no mention of it in that year's budget request, while chastising the council for not giving them an extra $144,000 in excess of the 2% increase set for all departments by the council that other departments met. Also, the school apartment and committee approved the three-year teacher contract with a 4% wage increase. The last year's council also approved the contract, but they're not funded, saying they would go, they would leave, uh, it up to the next, to the new council. Well, it turns out that the new council is the old council minus one. It's going to be interesting to see, in my opinion, if the new council approves the 2.5% teacher salary increase that's in the request for a 4% increase in the school department budget for next year. The school department, in order to save money, cut the after-school wrestling program. The parents and other, and others had a fundraiser to raise money to pay for the wrestling program, in which you, Mr. President, recognized the young man with his achievement in the state championship in his age group. Now we find out that the school department and committee gave some $250,000 in bonuses. Therefore, I'm asking that the council take the monetary value of the 2.5% salary increase for the teachers, add to it the nearly $250,000 that was given in bonuses, and subtract the total from the 4% request of some $1.03 million school department request. I'm also asking that you reduce from the town side of the budget, three quarters of 1%. I feel there is sufficient funds in the town side of the budget to cover the reduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ververs. Okay, um, Vice President has some more questions he wants to ask, and then we'll entertain anybody else in the audience, okay? Vice President?
Thank you. Um, so, one of the things I'd like, like to see the council do is, I'd like to see the council, I'd like to see us accelerate our road paving program. Um, we've, we've addressed the, the majority, if not all, of the, not completely finished, of the red roads, um, but, you know, I still see some funds that, you know, that's why I'm picking away at little things like the police van, like, there's $150,000 put away for, um, in the budget for consultants for the west side. Um, you know, I think that little things here and there add up, and I think that, um, you know, one of the things, one of the needs of the town is, uh, continued infrastructure. While we, while, over the years, councils have done a great job, um, that's what people see. They don't see the money under the road, they don't see the sewer improvements in the ground and drainage improvements in the ground. They see, although they're necessary, um, they see their road paved. And our roads in town, I mean, we're never going to catch up at $650,000 a year. We're never going to catch up. I'm not sure you'd ever catch up anyway, but we're never going to get to that point where we're in good shape all the way around with our roads. I just feel that going forward, especially as things get more, everything's getting more expensive, everything. We all see it, we all feel it, right? So I think there's a real need there, and I think we have, you know, there's some opportunity for us to be able to address those needs, even if we get a couple more done, two or three more done this year. It's two or three more, in 10 years, that's 30 roads, 20 or 30 more roads that you've paved. Um, you know, that's, that's put you in, in, in good shape, infrastructure-wise. I do agree with, with the philosophy of, um, you know, years ago, we used to just take and pave a road and put a Band-Aid over it, and the sewer would need it, and the drainage would have a problem. We don't do that. We haven't done that in 12 years or so. We take and we do, we take and we do, address the drainage, we address any sewer, whether it's slip lining or lines that need to be replaced, and then we pave the road, so that we have a solid, solid infrastructure, uh, underneath there, without a Band-Aid approach. So, um, we've made significant improvements with drainage, Mr. Brown. We've made significant improvements with sewer, our sewer infrastructure. We still have a little ways to go. Um, we attacked it neighborhood or addressed it neighborhood by neighborhood. Um, the Briarwood, Ellery, that's the, one of the final big neighborhoods down there, uh, that's getting finished up. But, um, I think that, you know, that $650,000 is a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money when it comes to the cost of paving roads. And that money is split between paving some roads and fixing just certain sections of roads. As you see around town, you might not see the whole road done, you might see a quarter mile of it done, or you might see a tenth of a mile or sections, and that's, that's okay, but that's not solving our long-term issue. It's just kind of putting it off. Um, and that also, that $650 is also split with the, the, the seal coat, the seal cracking. You'll see the, the black lines, the, the holes filled in or the cracks filled in in roads to prolong it and give it more longevity. So that seems to be working somewhat, but again, that's taken away from that, that's part of that $650,000. So I'd really like to see, um, our road paving accelerated, and I think that, uh, I think maybe we really need to take a look at our, uh, while we have a five-year capital improvement plan, um, and we've done a good job with it, I think it's time to take it to another level where we can really, really put a dent and, um, in, in, in our road program, in our road paving program, and, and, um, really save money in the future, because it's going to get more expensive and expensive and expensive. And so that's kind of where I'm at with it. It's been, um, it, it's, it's bothered me, and I'm sure it bothers all of us, um, not just myself, but I think unless we talk about it, unless we really take a look at some of the capital improvements, maybe that could be deferred, um, and, you know, put some extra money toward the road. That's really, really what I'd like to see. Sean, I do have one more question. Of the school department CIP, there is, I think, 4-point-something million in CIP, and I think, I think maybe three and a half or 3.7 million of it is from the, the bond and what they plan to accomplish in this next budget season or fiscal year. So I just want to review, it was brought up one meeting, um, because they asked a question, what's that additional capital request for? And it was told to us that it's because there are two more roofs or sections of roofs that weren't identified in the, either RGB report or the Jacobs report, which kind of, which kind of surprised, I think, all of us, uh, because in those reports, they told us, you know, five, 10 years down the road, you need to replace this pipe. So how do we miss a roof unless it's misinformation? Because that's, that's on my mind, but we have to do that, and if we are doing that, um, is that coming out of the bond?
So there are four projects being funded out of the town's capital improvement special revenue fund. They're listed on page three of the budget ordinance. They start on line 24. The first one is school furniture. We started looking at school furniture with the school department. Uh, I would say in the, the February, March timeframe, uh, the school committee, school superintendent and administration had identified the need for furniture. It's been in the capital improvement program, uh, for a number of years. It hasn't bubbled up to a point where we have addressed it, um, and is an integral part of providing instruction in the classroom. And, um, and during the time that we focused on it, we identified that there's roughly about two, it's about an investment of about $2 million of furniture, if, if we had to replace it right now in the school district. Um, and over the years, we haven't really invested much money at all in it. Uh, working through the budget with the superintendent, we've allocated $150,000 towards school furniture replacement, um, as a, as a, as a point to start addressing the issue. Um, and the intent was that we would continue to work with the school administration to identify, uh, a long-term plan, um, to address, uh, what's required in the schools. Uh, the next two items, technology replacement and network infrastructure. Technology replacement is $260,000, network infrastructure $70,000. Uh, we spent a couple months working with, uh, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent on the technology program, and what we ended up working on, mostly the, the assistant superintendent, was taking, um, her capital replacement program for technology, um, and then... and then basically, item by item, applying a policy to when, when we needed to replace tablets, workstations, servers, switches, the different components of technology that, that make up the network at the school department. And we boiled that down to basically where the school department needs through, with all of the equipment they need to support the, the educational program, approximately about $480,000 a year. And that's a number, we, we just, we quantified it a little bit differently than we have in the past, but it's, it's a solid number of what, what annually needs to go in order to maintain that program. So, the town would contribute the 260 and 70 out of the capital improvement special revenue fund. The school department would be funding the balance with monies from the Impact Aid program. And that would basically allow us to move past this discussion on the technology. It's in the schools, it's part of the program, but we'd be able to fund it. And I think the concern there is that our program itself continues to move away from, from books and moves towards more of a technology base. So, it's just a reality in the school district. And I think one of the goals that I had in putting the budget together this year was to try to work with Linda and the superintendent, Rose Marie, to get to a number that we thought would sustain the program, and we could sort of put a bow around that, you know, have a good level of confidence that we'd be able to, you know, a sustainable contribution, and then move on to some of these other areas that require attention. The last area is roofs. So there's a roof at the Gaudet School and a roof at Forest Avenue School. And they were not identified by RGB as roofs that needed to be replaced. And, in working with the facilities director at the schools, we identified that those, that those roofs came up as issues. The school department was having issues with water coming through them. They were identified as replacement. Even though they weren't on the RGB schedule, they needed replacement. They were on a replacement schedule outside of the bond as far as the facilities program. The school department did go out and get prices for those, and the total of dollar amount is $301,530. Our original discussion was to try to look for funds to address, and I think it was mostly the Gaudet School roof was the, the first priority within this current fiscal year. But given the timing, it was more appropriate, I thought, to put it into the budgetary process so that we could have this discussion so everyone was aware that there was, in fact, you know, two additional roof issues and that we would contemplate those as we were looking at the overall capital improvement program. But I think generally, the council, the, the town itself, roofs are important, we've tried to address those, and that, those, those two projects got prioritized and promoted within the CIP process. So, I think that's how we got here. And those are the, the items that are both town-school funded outside of the, the town's, the school, just school-only capital projects that were funded, besides the bond projects.
So those are outside of the bond?
Those are outside of the bond, but they are within the program that was approved by RIDE for reimbursement, I believe. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so with the 301,530, we'll get the 35, 35 percent reimbursement roughly on that.
Okay, so how does two companies like RGB and Jacobs both missing? I, I mean, it has to be done, it has to be done, I get it. But I just don't understand how that something, that, that magnitude gets missed. Because did we, did the school, did the school have to pay RGB?
Uh, yeah, the town, there was a contract with the town.
I might ask for some money back. I mean, I just, it's gotta be done, I get it. I'm, I'm all for getting it done. I don't like how it's coming out.
Madam Superintendent?
Something just doesn't seem right.
So, the Gaudet gym roof was not identified either by Jacobs or RGB. The roof is less than 17 years old. The issue with the roof is a lack of ice and water barrier under the shingles. So due to the low pitch and the wind-driven rains entering buildings at the time, that has caused a compromise in the membrane of the roof. So, at the time, RGB and Jacobs did the assessment, which was, what, three or four years ago? The, the roof was less than 17 years old, and they did not identify that. So we've gone back to the roofer with regard to the warranty, and, you know, we're, we're left needing to fix that roof. As our town administrator said, the Forest Avenue shingle and flat roof was identified in RIDE Stage Two approval and identified in 2015. We will get reimbursement for those roofs, for that roof, and we're working on the other. We should get reimbursement for the other.
So, so let me ask you, so why, why doesn't it just come out of the bond? Why is it coming outside the bond?
The Gaudet roof would have had to been identified in the bond. When we went for the bond, we didn't have this water and ice problem.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman.
Thank you. Just to clarify with Sean, Mr. Brown, I guess, the, so the $301,000 for the roof, that's before the 35 percent reimbursement, or that's with that in mind?
That's before the reimbursement.
Okay, so when the reimbursement comes back, it comes back to the town?
Right, so...
Where does that go?
It goes back into the capital improvement special revenue fund. That was a, a resolution passed by the school committee a number of years ago when we set up the capital improvement program so that in the, for a project like this, the $301,000 would be spent, but the money would come back in to be re-appropriated for another project.
Okay, another question on the technology. So, did I hear correctly that, that technology piece is gonna be about $480,000 a year going forward? That's what the town can plan to spend to keep the school's technology current?
Right, so Linda went through, basically, you know, going from the server, you know, server to switches to workstations and, and whatever devices are on the network, a full inventory of what the school district operates. She identified the useful life of those, those components on the network, and, and we, we went through a process to calculate, basically, an accrual or a set aside that needs to be made each year in order to have the funds available to replace technology at the end of its useful life.
I'm going.
And, those are numbers that we, we looked at. Not only, you know, the school department looked at them, I looked at them, I did review those with, with Matt Wainwright. They, they're, they're reasonable numbers, and it's, it's at a reasonable accrual in order to maintain the number of devices that they have out there. But it, it is based on a, a full inventory of what the school department operates with, replacement with new technology, basically moving away from buying the used technology with warranties, and making sure that we're, we're achieving the academic standards that the school committee have, have put in place. So, the $480,000 number is good, and I, I can't recall, it's either for a three or five-year period. We did look at it so that... Yep. So, so we did look at that number for a, a number of years. The other thing, just as, that we did look at when we did the analysis, one of the things we had then to do was look at it on a cost per pupil on an annual basis. We did wanna be conscious of it from, from that standpoint. And it works out, and, and this goes across the school district mostly. It's, it's about $226 per student per year to maintain the, the equipment that we have out there. So, it, it's, it's roughly, you know, I just, roughly in the numbers, it's, it's, it's a little over 3,000, you know, different pieces of equipment that we maintain, which goes from laptops, iPads, desktop service switches, wireless access points, printers, and presentation-side television. So, it, it's the whole gamut of the technology infrastructure that, that supports the educational process.
And will the town's portion consistently be the 330,000 with the school side, I assume, making up the 150,000?
Yes.
So we're committed to that over the next four years?
As of right now, yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Vice President, I know you have more questions.
So, so why is that? Sean?
Which?
Why is the 330, why is the town? We're all one town, right? And we wanna be one. But the school department has a budget, the town has a budget, municipal side has a budget, right? So we wanna consider ourselves ones no matter whether we agree or disagree on certain issues. But, it's almost like, this reminds me of almost like the state with the state, you know, taking some of our funds and the building spec, building, building fee fund. So if we're gonna continue or start to supplement school department in, in certain areas, I'm not sure that's right. I mean, they should be able to fund themselves and make decisions and manage that bucket of money at $43 million that they get. So, 43 million, are we gonna give an additional 300 and some thousand? It does not seem right to me. Something's wrong.
Mr. President? Just to throw on the table, you know, based on the conversation, you know, the, the school department is a department of the town. Is that true?
Yes.
And every department is represented in the CIP. So, so they're gonna get some CIP money from the town, I think. That's capital improvement plan, if, if everybody missed, anybody missed that. So, I, I think it's fair they get some, I'm not sure. I mean, I understand what you're saying...
But it's not the same repetitive over and over and over every year that we should commit to. If it's a one-time thing, I mean, they came up with a million dollars a few years ago to buy some computers, right? But now we're gonna go, now we need to supplement that. So I'm not sure that's right. CIP is not, is not, is not designed for repetitiveness.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
And that's the way I see it going, and I don't think that's right. If it was a one-time thing, or we needed to get them somewhere where they needed to be, no problem, but I can see, I can see where it's going. It's going down a road where it's gonna be consistently funded, and I don't agree with that. You have a budget, 43 million's the biggest budget in the town. You should be able to fund it.
Is that true, Mr. Brown? The CIP, the intent of the CIP, it's for those occasional one-time or, or a large project over a, a finite number of years that would be funded?
I think it can be easily defined as this. The CIP, although it's a line item, is broken up into individual allocations. Not repetitive, like the Vice President said. It shouldn't be a repetitive allocation. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a accrual of funding to fund capital improvement projects. Projects, not a continual lineup. So, anyways.
I, just so, if I can...
Go ahead.
No, so, again, when I started the budget process this year, so, I mean, we're all familiar with how the school department ramped up from a level of density of, of IT within the school district. And it, it increased significantly with the purchase, the one-time purchase of the million-dollar computers, million dollars' worth of, of technology. And, and we all know at that time that the issue was, how is it gonna be sustainable? And, again, looking at our obligation, whether we're buying books or kits or, or, or computer programs or delivering a desktop to a student, that, that concept of, of content, this, this number wasn't really going away. And, again, looking at trying to make this a, a complete budget process, trying to identify ways in which we, we move the town forward, I had sat down with the, the school administration with the goal of trying to at least reconciling the program to a point where we could at least stabilize it. Because I think otherwise, this, this would be another point. I mean, we're, we're, we're discussing it right now on whether it belongs in this bucket or, or who's gonna pay for it. But the, the bottom line is, to keep the program going, we need that $480,000. Unless we, we made a radical shift to another way of providing technology for students. And that's, you know, I think something the school department should continue to look at. But right now, we have a curriculum based around having this, this set of, of technology available to teachers and students, and, and it requires care and feeding. And, and we've talked about that, so, I mean, I, I think these are all good points. My, my goal was strictly, and, and the superintendent's, to try to get to a point where at least this program is, 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 is sustainable. But I would agree, we still have work to do from a funding standpoint.
Okay. Vice President, you have any other questions?
No, I mean, I...
You can always come back.
Yeah, I mean...
Councilman Santos, I know you have some?
Please. I wanna start with the easy one, the Jacobs report, which they messed up on the school, on the Gaudet Gym and Forest Avenue at Singel. They not only messed up on that one, they also messed up on two of our historic buildings. They said that we had a gas, we had gas furnaces in those two schools. Then why the heck am I paying oil bill every month for oil to be delivered to that school, to those schools? We don't have gas, we have oil. They messed up on that. So I'd like to know, when are we gonna do, address this Jacob report sometime down the road? After the budget is completed?
We'd have to.
Okay, number two.
Can I just address that also?
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
So, we, we did engage Jacobs to do a town-wide review of the town's facilities, both town and school, using a, a common method of, of appraisal or assessment. And, and the purpose for that is so that when the council looks at where to spend the next dollar on facilities, it, it understands that whether it's looking at the senior center, the library, or a school department building. And Mr. Santos is right, there are a lot of details that need to be corrected in the report, but it is a, a substantial document with a lot of information. And after we go through this process this year, we will update that information. These are the projects we funded, these are the projects that we didn't fund, and also try to correct some of the errors that are in the report. But there is a lot of, there are a lot of areas that were identified, you know, where things that the staff wouldn't necessarily identify as something that needs to be addressed. And, and that's the purpose of the report. It's very similar to the road condition index where we, we, we take a snapshot, we look at the issues that we need to address, and the goal, you know, as we budget and, and spend dollars is that when we come back in, in five years, that the condition index is at least the same or better than it is today. Otherwise, it represents that we're basically financing the town's operations through deferred maintenance. And that's what we're trying to, to avoid. And, and with all respect for Mr. Santos, and I agree with her that that should have been, you know, identified correctly, there is in the capital improvement program as a product of the Jacobs report a set aside of $23,000 for the net, each year, for the next five years to address structural issues with our historic buildings. You know, and she talked about one this evening where the, the foundation is, is falling in at the, the Paradise School. You know, if it wasn't for the Jacobs report and sort of having these discussions, we wouldn't recognize the work that we do need to put into those buildings. And, and, and we may have missed the fact that we needed to budget $23,000 or whatever it is for the foundation at the school. And then that would come back mid-year, and that would be sort of a mini-fire drill, how do we take care of that building? So, we have some work to do. I think it's a long-term process. But I think it's a good process for the community because there is that snapshot, it's on the website. And I think it demonstrates to the community that, again, we're taking care of the stuff we already have. There's a report card that says that. And it sort of helps give people confidence that we're making smart decisions and not random decisions that, that may not be in the community's best interest, so...
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
May I continue?
You may, Councilman Santos.
Regarding the foundation, Mr. Brown, the recent rain that we've been having over the months has gone into that cellar. In fact, we had the Middletown Fire Department pump the cellar out. That's how... That's how bad, how bad that hole is. So, we're gonna have to wait until the budget is approved, in order to have that foundation around that school. Another thing, if you ride by Paradise School, you're gonna see a new fence. The Middletown Historical Society paid eighteen hundred dollars to have that new fence put in. The old one was deteriorating, it looked bad, it was a disgrace. All right, drop that subject. Let's go to another subject. This is our Vice Chairman's recommendation on pay-as-you-throw. He had some good ideas about bringing in new customers. Do you wanna take it over?
I'd love to hear what you have, if you captured my ideas correctly.
Well, you, you got an email here. You offer non-participating residents an opportunity to try the program for free during months of September and October. That would be free, the town would be paying for it. Okay, you'd also get the bags, am I correct on that?
I didn't make that recommendation.
Participating would be.
I, I asked to come up with some new avenues to attract the, to grow the participation rate, so that we get to a certain number where the hundred-and-forty-one-dollar annual fee goes away. The town came back quickly and promptly, thank you, with these recommendations.
That came from the town staff.
Yeah.
And also, they recommended that students design a permit, have a permit contest for the twenty-twenty-one stickers. Now, this would be, the winners would be offered a pay-as-you-throw user free gift certificate. Now, the other thing that would have to be done, mail out an annual report to all residents in the town about the program's success and tips for successful participation. That's his recommendation, and the town's recommendation.
That came from the town staff.
It came from the town.
But you started it.
I just wanted ways for the town to look at, have a plan in place, or develop ways to, or ideas to try and grow the participation rate, so that we could hopefully eventually, um, put more money into the, into that particular fund. Two, one, for a total replacement at some point in time, so residents wouldn't be charged. And two, to help lower that fee, if not dissipate that fee to, to zero, uh, for participation rate. And that may attract, that may attract more people, which would up the petition, participation rate.
All right, my third subject. This is a buzz in Where the Sun Doesn't Shine. Mr. Brown and I have been going round and round on this. I am be, I am in the sewer, but I have a well. I am being charged for forty-two thousand nine hundred and two gallons, for a total of six-hundred-eighty-one dollars and twenty-one cents. I live alone. The dogs don't turn on the faucets, they haven't learned yet. Now, the tax assessor's office were very kind and sent me three people who live alone. One uses fifteen thousand four ninety gallons, for a total of two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. Another one, a gentleman, lives alone. He uses thirteen thousand three ninety-eight gallons, for a total of two-hundred-and-twelve dollars and seventy-six cents. Another uses twenty-one thousand oh sixty-eight, for a total of three-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. I can reduce my fee by putting a meter. I have to get a plumber, the plumber go, get a plumber, the plumber installs it, he has to buy a meter, and then they would read it, the public works, I understand, reads it once a year. I would bring this amount down. We are being discriminated, because we have wells and we don't wanna put meters in, on our property. Why cannot the, take the average of these people who live alone? You have, you have it on the tax rolls. I went through the tax rolls at three o'clock this morning, and found many who are on wells, who are being charged a hell of a lot. That's all I got to say. Maybe somewhere down the road, it can be adjusted. But I don't expect that at my age, I'll ever see it.
Council on Ball.
So, to backtrack a little bit, um, on this technology thing. It might be a good idea to have Superintendent, if you come up for a second, because I think the question I've got, I think you're probably best equipped to answer. So, going back a few years ago, when this whole technology thing came up, and the computers, the purchase of the computers came up. One of the things that's really etched in my brain is one-time funds. They sit, these are being, this is one-time purchases, one-time funds. And, the, there's five of us up here, that really knew and believed that this was gonna be a new program, this was gonna be a new curriculum. This was gonna be a program that we were gonna have to support and sustain over the years. And, it's happening. So, it, it, it is, and, and one of the, one of the questions I'm asking you is, so, the town has a share of this, and then the school department's gonna take a share of it based on impact aid funds. I know you're well-schooled in impact aid. And, is, this, these, these funds are not guaranteed every year, am I correct?
That's right. Uh, prior year payments for impact aid, uh, go to facilities and technology, as designated by the school committee. And, this year, for instance, we have received zero prior year payments in impact aid. So, if we don't have the dollars, we don't spend the money.
So, do you anticipate getting prior year? I mean, I know, I know sometimes it comes in late.
It does. Um, when I went to, um, I'm, I'm on the board, the National Association of Federally Impacted Schools, we were told that by the end of the school year, we would get prior year payment.
Do we know how much?
Uh, no, we don't know how much.
How much was it?
Because there's a, a lot that goes into that formula with the prior year, it's how many, uh, how, how much is left over from the appropriations? How many districts are eligible for it? And they split that up. So, we, we usually use a trend of, of how much we've gotten in prior year payments. And I believe our trend is about, I'm gonna look at Cindy, it's about one-fifty, one-seventy-five in prior year payments.
So, last year, that was where it fell, one-fifty, one-seventy-five in that ballpark? Have we ever had years where we've had zero?
Yes, we have. And then we don't spend the money, obviously.
And I know I've asked you this question in the past, but it's my understanding that at one time, the school department used to use that in its operating budget, and not as, took it as one-time funds.
Yes, that is true. Years ago, there's the basic payment and the prior year payments. So, when we knew what the prior year payments were, it wasn't anticipated, it was like the year before, they would go in as revenue.
So, what happens if you don't get it next year? I mean, are we on the hook for the whole other, is the town side up?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't spend the, the one-fifty that's allocated to us, on the school department. And, the other thing, in terms of the capital improvement, when we go for housing aid, and we get the reimbursement, that reimbursement comes back into the CIP, the town CIP, to help feed and nurture that CIP year after year.
Thank, thank you on that piece. And I wanna make one comment, that's, that's, you answer my question, thank you. Last, last week, um, someone very emphatically said to me, uh, when I reminded the school, the school committee and the school department that, you know, their budget was forty-three million dollars. And, um, a member of the school committee said to me, "That includes the, the bond." Well, yeah, it does. But the fact of the matter is, the town voters approved that bond, that's taxpayer dollars that went into that bond, and the taxpayers are paying it back. That's how that bond is getting funded. And, on top of that, I would dare to say, without the efforts of Mr. Brown, and some people on the town side, because he figured out a way, that it would be no impact on the tax rate, that that bond got approved. Because I would, I don't, I would doubt seriously, if we would have had that ten million dollar bond, had it not been for the work on the town side, and, and Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Council Flynn.
I'd just like to correct that prior year payment, I just looked at the numbers, the average is about three-hundred thousand.
Great, great, thanks.
Council Flynn.
And the reimbursement for the bond is about thirty-five.
Council Flynn.
Thank you.
I just have a, a question about us, um, purchasing our technology, which is always going to have to be replaced, as technology improves and becomes obsolete so quickly these days, every six months, for those that are in the industry, or less. So, are there not programs, like with Apple or something, where you get your, your, you know, your laptops, or your iPads? And then they will switch them out with upgrades? Is any of that happening in your industry?
Linda Savistano, Assistant Superintendent. Um, there are lease programs, there are different programs, you can utilize vendors for that. So, um, that has a different conversation, though, with Mr. Brown, as far as the liability that we have when you do lease programs, and the impact of that. And that would, together, be something we would have to discuss.
Has that, has it been a cost analysis on, I, I think that would, might be of interest, if we're going to constantly be having to rotate, just by nature of the beast. And as Mr. Brown pointed out, that is going to be how it is going to, how education is going to be in the future. I think we need to take a look at some options.
We, we did a number of years ago, and you're absolutely correct, we need to continue to look at many options. Um, including, we've talked, bring your own device in the future, and it does change very quickly. Um, we did go through and do, as, as Sean had shared earlier, we did a cost analysis, breaking down the different items, looking at their total, um, life. So, for example, for some items, it might be ten years, believe it or not, we have some printers that work very, very well, that we've had for twenty years. And then, you do have some devices that you know we are gonna get, um, five years from. So, we have that, I can leave the document that we went through to analyze, based upon the inventory, the life of it, the cost of it, and then that per pupil cost. Which actually, we had talked a little bit about last year, and stemmed into a deeper, um, dig into it. But, we, absolutely, we need to constantly evaluate how we're funding, and, and also, what the best option is for purchasing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Rosemarie. So, my question is, the, uh, I think it's, I think Sean said it's two-hundred thousand dollars for school furniture. And, so.
One-fifty, I believe.
One-fifty?
One-fifty.
So, what types of things, I mean, I'm all for that, we had a meeting, it was about that sports complex, uh, four, five, six years ago, when we had the meeting at, at Gorday School, because we expect a lot of people to be there. And before the meeting, we had our executive session in one of the old, uh, art rooms, as you go down towards the eighth grade hallway, on the right-hand side. And, it was to the point where, I was actually embarrassed about the, about some of the furniture that were, that we sat on, we sat on it for a half hour, but the kids and the teachers have to. So, I just wanna make sure, if that's there, that's what it's for.
Absolutely, it is. We have a, a committee, a made, a, a teacher's committee, Mr. Fonz heads that up, regarding furniture. Uh, school furniture has changed over the years. Teachers are interested in flexible grouping, so you can, you know, pull, pull a, a desk aside, or a table aside, and a student can work by themselves. You can pull it, and, uh, another way, and students can work in small groups. So, teachers are, really have made the choices, our building principals have made the choices with the teachers, in terms of flexible grouping, flexible furniture. And there is a committee of teachers that, um, really lets us know what they need to, uh, to improve their teaching.
Okay, good, thank you.
Just a, a good note, I don't know if you've been following, but Mason Gilman, a senior of ours, won the state golf tournament.
Oh, awesome. Yeah, go ahead.
I, um, Mr. Brown, I've got, I, I have a couple of comments, um, not school-related right now. Um, I wanna talk about the tax incremental funding. When I look at this, and, correct me if I'm wrong, the numbers off the top of my head, the TIF for a lower clinic avenue. We're looking at four-thirty to four-fifty a year for thirty years?
Correct.
Okay. And that's part of the budget that you submitted, correct?
Yes, uh, the council and MEDAC and the planning board have been working on that, yes.
And, I'm not opposed to that. I, I look at it, and it looks to me like it's, it probably equates to about a third of a percent, or a half a percent to the, to the taxes, is that, is that a fair number?
It's a little bit, yeah, it's, it's a little bit over half a percent on the taxes.
Okay, all right, so that's a fair number. And I'm not opposed to this. Right, right. But, um, I'm not opposed to it, but, um, I think when we, um, the TIF, in, in my opinion, um, could certainly be used in other areas of town as well, and perhaps we'll, um, look into that. And perhaps we'll even institute a TIF program in another area. But, when you're taking this much money to support a program in one area of town, it's a lot of money. I mean, you're talking thirty years, at four-hundred, roughly four-hundred-fifty thousand dollars per year. And, my only opposition to it is, and I voted for it, I supported it, and I, I'm still gonna support it. But, it's, that particular area that we're talking about, it's not, it, to me, it's not building or generating potential new revenue, with the only exception being the increase in property value. It's, it's more remodeling of an area. I mean, that's just the way I look at it. I don't see it as taking a vacant lot, and doing a TIF program, and doing the infrastructure, and bringing businesses, or bringing residents in, or bringing, um, something that would generate revenue. I mean, the revenue, for all intents and purposes, is already there. The only additional revenue is the tax. Uh, i- is that a fair assessment, Mr. Brown?
Well, I mean, the, the number of the four-eighteen, three-thirteen is a, is a number that represents the increase in revenues that would, that, that have been created by, uh, that remodel that you talked about. So, that's, that's where the increase is. I, you know, I guess if you look at the Seaview Motel, the Seaview Motel that's there now is much different than the Seaview Motel that was there before, so. Um, there may, may be some more jobs, there, there's definitely more beds, um, there's, those, those type of things, but, uh, but it's, it's, yes, you are correct, it's not a, it's not like we're looking at the West Main Road, where you have vacant property, where you're literally going from zero to something that has a significant tax base.
Okay.
This is, this is more of an, an increment than a, uh,
Exactly.
uh, an avalanche of, for lack of a better term, but.
I just wanted to make a point of bringing that up, because, um, I, um, I see potential use for it on the other side of town. And, um, I see it as a potential use to, to generate some, some, some strong income, that would be, be strong and long-lasting taxpayer relief. So, with that, is there any other questions in the council as well? Yes? Okay. All right. We have some motions. Uh, anybody else in the audience wanna make any, any comments? Okay, see you none. Okay. We're gonna be making some motions to amend the budget, okay? And we'll be voting on them as a council, one item at a time.
Okay. Motion to support regional economic development through Connect Greater Newport. I move that planning on page one, line thirty-two, be increased by twenty-five thousand dollars. And the taxes levied by the municipality on page two, line sixteen, be, be increased by twenty-five thousand dollars. And all subtotals and totals be adjusted accordingly.
Second?
Okay, we motion second. Any conversation? Here or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to support Middletown Prevention Coalition's programming at the Gorday Middle School. I move to increase the programming hours from five hours to twenty-five hours per week. And that the Middletown Prevention Coalition, on page one, line thirty-eight, be increased by twenty-two thousand four hundred. And the taxes levied by municipality, on page two, line sixteen, be increased. by $22,400. And the taxes levied by municipality on page two, line 16, be increased by $22,400. And all subtotals and totals be adjusted accordingly.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any conversation? Hearing that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion that the appropriation to the school department be funded at the fiscal year 2019 level. And the education amount on page two, line 11, be decreased by $1,060,428. And the taxes levied by municipality amount on page two, line 16, be decreased by $1,060,428. And the appropriation to the school department amount on page three, line 30, be decreased by $1,060,428. And all subtotals and totals be adjusted accordingly.
Second?
We have a motion, a second. Any conversation? Hearing that. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
We have, we have one nay, I heard. You have a complimentary clerk?
I have.
Okay.
Motion to add section 1F on page five, full funding of pension and other post-retirement systems with the following text. Section 1F, full funding of pension and other post-retirement systems, in accordance with Town Charter, section 33.19B2, the annual budget will provide for the full funding of the employee retirement systems as recommended by the town's actuary.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any conversation? Hearing that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to support a Quinick Avenue and Forest Avenue school playground equipment purchases. I move that the non-department specific amount on page six, line 12, be increased by $44,654. And it breaks down as follows, $14,654 for a Quinick Avenue playground, and $30,000 for a Forest Avenue playground. And the user fee program, and the user and program fees, each amount on page six, line 21, be increased by $44,654. And all subtotals and totals be adjusted accordingly.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any conversation? Hearing that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to increase Middletown Babe Ruth Civic Support. I move that the Parks and Recreation Fund and Civic Appropriation for Middletown Babe Ruth, amount on page six, line 38, be increased by $2,000. And the Parks and Recreation Fund Civic Appropriation for Middletown Little League, amount on page six, line 40, be decreased by 2,000. And all subtotals and totals be adjusted accordingly.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any conversation? Hearing that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, a second.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Flynn.
There's an adjustment on section 2A regarding the sale Newport and the total of the appropriation for the Park and Rec Fund that needs to be addressed, I believe. So, the total amount should be $93,250, and the sale Newport amount should be zero.
Okay.
Is that the 3,800?
Yes, 3,800.
Yeah, the 3,800, okay.
Page six, line 46.
So moved as an addendum. Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilwoman Flynn.
Motion to close...
Thank you, Councilwoman Lombardi.
And Councilwoman Lombardi.
Motion to close the public hearing.
And Councilwoman Santos.
And...
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Mr. Brown, before we, before we close the public hearing, I wanna thank you. I wanna thank your staff. I wanna thank every department, okay? For, again, you know, coming in with a, a budget that is, is truly, we believe, fair. Budget that truly represents and maintains the quality of life that we wanna maintain in this town, and one that is doable and payable by our taxpayers. So, I wanna thank you. I wanna thank every one of your departments. And I sincerely mean that, because you all work hard throughout the year. Did you wanna say something, Lori? Come on up to the mic and identify yourself.
Lori Verderosa, Program Director of Middletown Prevention Coalition. I just wanna thank you all profusely for your recommendation to, you heard our need for services down at Gorday, and you responded to that need. So, thank you for that ability to do that.
Thank you.
Middletown Land District Coalition, just ending up my third year as chair. As you know, I'm retiring. I just wanted to thank everyone on the council for your support for the last three years.
You're welcome.
Particularly our members, Greg and Terry.
Thank you for your service to the community. Okay, Mr. Brown, and before we, Vice President makes a motion to adopt, hopefully we'll be able to do some, as we move along throughout this year, some final tweaking. So, it's our hope that we're gonna come in with a, a zero tax increase. Okay?
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate, again, your staff, the clerks, everybody that put a lot of time into this process. Mr. Vice President, oh, name and address.
Mary Allen, 9 Baldwin Road. I'm here representing the Quinick PTG, and we just wanted to thank you for your support and, and...
You're welcome.
Helping our playground. So, thanks so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Do we have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adopt said ordinance on a secondary as amended.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt said ordinance on a secondary as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number three, resolution of the council, RE, levy resolution.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Second?
We have a motion, a second, to pass. Any conversation? Hearing that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion, a second, to adjourn. In closing, ladies and gentlemen, thank you again. Thank you all for participating in this process. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, colleagues.
Oh, yeah. No, I got somewhere over here.